Good morning. Welcome to Tuesday, November 24th, 2020, meeting of the Reno County Commission. As always, we will start our meeting this morning with the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. Would you stand with me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under your honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This morning, for our opening prayer, we have with us David Dukovic, who is the pastor at Park Place Christian Church. David, please.
Sure, thank you, Ron. Let's go to God in prayer. Indeed, loving, gracious God, as we have each had a good night's rest and we've awoken to a new day, and we give you thanks, oh God, for the many blessings you bestow upon us each day. And as the county commissioners begin their meeting this morning, oh God, we ask you to be with them in all the decisions that they will make this day for the betterment of our community, as we continually all strive each day to make a difference in the lives of those in our community. And, oh God, as we are in the midst of approaching Thanksgiving in a few days, oh God, we just ask you for all of the blessings you do bestow upon us each day, that this year's Thanksgiving will look a lot different for many of us, for all of us, and, oh God, we just ask you to bless us with those who we will be with and the means of technology that we can reach out to our loved ones and be with them in a different way, oh God. Just ask you to give us the blessings each day that you bestow upon us, oh God. We give you thanks. Amen.
Thank you, David, for being with us today.
Not a problem.
Okay. A couple of announcements and then we'll get into our meeting. Our county councillor is not with us this morning. He will call in when we get to items that he's involved in with our executive session, but I believe he's waiting on a test at home. Secondly, we've received a letter last week that was put in with the agenda packet from the chairman of the Sedgwick County Commission. People can read it from looking at the agenda. I just wanted to read a couple phrases that he had in this letter. He addressed it to chairperson Ron Sellers. Dear Mr. Sellers, we are aware of the challenges that COVID-19 has brought to the health, safety, and economic vitality of our communities. Sedgwick County and South Central Kansas region has accomplished so much over the past years because of collaborative goals and efforts. Together, we have worked to improve our regional economy for the advancement of our citizens in the state. He goes on and suggests that Sedgwick County, neighboring county, including ours, has been identified as one or more of COVID-19 patients coming from our county to Wichita County Hospital System. He urges us to support the slowing of the virus with any necessary means you believe would be most effective. I did have a chance to visit with Chairman Meisner yesterday briefly, and I think he's very concerned about the cases in Sedgwick County. I believe I saw something that says that Sedgwick County has more cases now than any other county in the state. I thanked him for his letter and told him that we were hoping to do what we could to slow the spread of the virus. The county commissioners have received written reports this morning from the county health department and emergency management department. Those items will be put on the county website for the public to read or review as they so And with that, I think that's my comments this morning. Shonda, do we have anybody in the audience that wants to make? Okay, we have, this is our point for public comment on items not on the agenda. We do have one person with us, or at least, would you please come to the podium, please, state your name and address? You have up to five minutes to make remarks on any item not on the agenda.
Thanks, Commissioner Sellers. I'm going to make this brief today.
Your name and address, Brock?
Brock Wells, 212 West Avenue B here in Hutch. This past week, we got a timely example of science, and what I mean by that is we all, or most of us saw the report in the Hutch paper and all the rest of the papers that said the CDC report COVID cases dropped in Kansas counties with mask orders rose in others. And this is a great example, and there's also another study that got published this past week in a Danish study, and I wanted to point this out. This is a great example of high-quality science versus low-quality science, and that the low-quality science is what the CDC report and the KDHE provided in that. That's what we call an observational study. And again, they, this is, you know, this has been the third time that the KDHE has published something about the mask mandates working when they can be easily disputed. Now, the Danish study, that is a randomized control trial. That is the best level of evidence, and they actually did back in, or excuse me, back in April, May, and a touch into June, they did a study of masks versus unmasked group, and basically what they found is there's no significant difference between the two groups. And that was the first one, excuse me, I think I skipped over, that's the first one to show, actually do it over the COVID/SARS coronavirus. So basically, you know, I definitely want to get both sides here because, and that's why we're here, and maybe just, you know, just ask questions, you know, why are we mandating, you know, these policies based on low-level science and basically marketing slogans is what we're doing now, you know, saying that, you know, it's common sense to wear a mask? You know, we had Leon Rupp, Mr. Leon Rupp here last week, saying to him, it's common sense to, why would I wear a mask when deprive myself of oxygen and then pollute the air I'm breathing in with the CO2? You know, and basically, you know, what good are these mandates, you know, when, you know, they promote, when, you know, yet another step fact that came out is Amazon and Walmart have made almost over $130 billion during these lockdowns, and we got 20% of small businesses that have gone out. You know, I've heard some from small business owners downtown saying, hey, you know, people, we're, people are scared to come shop, and this is our, this is our big time right now, you know, between Christmas and New Year's. And again, I appreciate everyone trying to slow the spread of the virus, but that's just, viruses are going to spread. So, you know, and again, you know, why are we mandating policies, you know, based on low-level science and based on, you know, showing that there are, there are at least 17 harms that are possible from wearing a mask? You know, and if the masks work, you know, we'd all be wearing them, you know, and why would we have to mandate? And then you see the progression that's coming, you know, you got Derby who just said, hey, we're fining people, you know, for not wearing a mask. They gave you a nice little number to call to tell on your neighbor. You know, this is the stuff that, you know, is just not American, you know, and so, and, you know, Derek Schmidt came back, I think back in March, you know, saying, you know, we really can't enforce these mandates. You know, so that's, that is a question, and so, you know, and there was another, you know, that's why this focused protection is another avenue to do this, and Sweden, Sweden is the country that has done this from the beginning. South Dakota's done this, and there's absolutely no difference in the cases, the deaths, and the hospitalizations. So, that's...
Okay, Brock, I believe you've had your five minutes.
So, yeah, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
And I've studied, I've looked both those studies over very closely as well, and one that's particularly interesting is the way the, it's portrayed as being neutral from the Kelly administration, but it's not in any way, shape, or form where this KU Health System statistician comes out with this contrived statistic. It proves the old adage that statistics don't lie, but liars do statistics, where they, what they based their conclusion on was this change in the rate of a 14-day rolling average. You know, when you can, you can, you can put stuff together in certain ways to come out with whatever conclusion you want, and they did. The reality was that in the mass-mandated counties from July 3rd to August the 24th, per 100,000 people, the cases went up 207%. Basically, the same dates in the no-mandate counties, they went up 54%. That's the simple, straightforward statistics. Now, I heard, I heard, third party, that one of the commissioners said that there was proof out there that masks cut transmission down 40%. Is, are you aware of any study that validates that?
I do not. Now, there are some studies that show, again, they're low-quality...
How about a study in society in regards to the China virus?
Yeah, so all the randomized control trials for influenza-like illness, because obviously this COVID just happened this year, and like I said, the first randomized control trial just came out, or just got printed last week. All of the randomized control trials, the meta-analysis of those, the top-quality evidence for influenza-like viruses show that masks do not have an effect on those. And that is because the viron is so small that through your respiratory, just breathing, it's going to get through those masks, and that's what it shows, even in hospital settings.
And the Danish study was published in the Annals of Internal Medicine, I think, a fairly reputable journal, and their whole goal was to try to, they set it all up. You got, you got to kind of start, it's like baking a cake. You got to have the right ingredients. You got to know the numbers. And they set this up to try to prove that there was a 50% reduction in transmission if you wore a mask or if you didn't. And they had the right numbers of people in the studies. It's not the greatest study. It's not the apex of studies in any way, shape, or form, but it's one of the best ones we've got in regards to this virus, and they could not show that that happened. So, again, you know, it just perplexes me that, you know, the CDC, we know they said don't mask and then mask, but what do they do? Do they recommend, or they recommend mandates? Well, they recommend. Nobody recommends mandates. The World Health Organization doesn't. Only somehow, when it hits the county level, do we suddenly start making mandates, and to do it without the preponderance of scientific evidence, like the stop sign. A lot of people like to use the stop sign analogy. Well, we know, if you don't stop at stop signs, your longevity is going to be shortened very quickly, but we don't know that with this virus. And we're, you're not trying to tell anybody to can't wear a mask, correct?
No, I, you know, I have no issues with people wearing masks. If it makes them feel better, that is fine. It just, there's...
But it's a front to a personal freedom to be forced to in the face of no scientific evidence.
Right.
Commissioner Stefan, if you're going to quote me, quote me accurately.
Well, I said, I didn't say your name.
But I said if they do, 40%. If they, if masks would help control the spread, if, the word if was in there.
Okay. Well, I tried to qualify it. I really did. I don't, I don't mean to be disrespectful. I do question your scientific expertise.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you.
Stefan, do you have other items to say on this?
I think I'm good. I will be talking more in my closing comments about what's gone, Ellen, in the past week regarding the virus for those of you in the ether who would like to hear about it.
Okay. Are there other people outside, Shonda, that want to speak this morning? Okay. If not, we'll move on to determine additions or revisions to the agenda. Mr. Partington, do you have any additions?
Just the CRF for the consent agenda, the 584,000.
36680?
80, yes.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the commissioners...
I would like to put Commissioner Sellers, I would like to put Item D on the consent agenda down for Item B at the business items.
Okay.
And what's the result of doing that?
Results from that is to discuss the cost of strips that we will be charged, the test strips.
That we will be charged in that contract. I find that to be excessive.
Okay, so basically, you're going to make a move to where we're going to talk about that pre-contract today, but not move forward with it at all? Just open it up for discussion?
No, I think it's still an action item, because it's in the consent... It's in the consent agenda to approve or disapprove, but I wanted to bring it down to talk about that one particular item within the contract.
Yeah, I think it needs more discussion, too.
Okay, we'll move back to Item B under heading eight of business items. Commissioner Stefan, do you have any additions or changes you'd like to make to the agenda?
No, I don't.
Okay. I'd like a motion to approve the revised agenda, please. I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hearst?
Yes.
Commissioner Stefan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, will be just Items A, B, and C. There are no vouchers this week of normal Reno County bills and payments, but we do have the coronavirus help of 584,36680. We have change orders for 2020 of 556 through 558, 565 through 577, 579 through 581, and 591 through 612. Then we have a request for proposals for salary compensation study to begin January 21. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I so move. I approve the consent agenda as presented by staff with Items A, B, and C, and the cares funding. Is there a second? I will second that. Is there any further discussion?
Okay, help me out here. We're going to talk about what's included in here in regards to the recommendations as to the remainder of the cares money?
Yes, yes, that's...
That's going to come up?
That's under Item 8A.
Okay.
It's going to be with Gary Mager and John Deardah.
Okay, so that's not included in there?
No.
That will be talked about.
Just the funds that they've associated, the spend. The funds that have already been approved. That's what we're voting for now to pay out. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hearst?
Yes.
Commissioner Stefan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Item 7, public hearing, adoption of the revised floodplain resolution. I believe to do this, we need to have a motion to open a hearing. I believe you can do that yourself, can't you? Randy, can't he do?
Yes.
Can the chairman just do it himself? Okay, we'll move to open the hearing and follow that with discussion, then we'll close the public hearing. To present this information today is our, Mark from our planning department. A lot of work goes into the floodplain work and so forth, so explain it to us as, in as common a language as possible, Mark. I know this is a very complicated document.
It is very complicated, and good morning, Commissioners, Mark Von Aitchen, county planner. I will try and be brief here, but yet be able to answer any questions and try not speaking to a language that maybe is not as common. In my agenda request, you know, I tried to provide the county commissioners a general background of how we got to this point today, so certainly if you have any questions on that agenda request and the write-up in there, I'd be happy to go over that as well. This request has essentially three components to it. The first component really is adoption of the digital and paper floodplain maps. These floodplain maps are scheduled to go effective on January 29, 2021. These floodplain maps are only for the Cow Creek watershed and a portion of the Arkansas River. These maps are not for any other river or any other watershed in the county, so the Nenexa River up in the Buell area, the Little Arkansas River, those are not included in this adoption process. And I believe we had a map of the actual floodplain proposal, you know, out there if you want to. We'll see that here shortly here.
We can pull it up on the screen if you guys want to see it.
I would love to see it.
Yeah, we can show you.
I like maps.
While we're doing that, I'll move on. The second component of this process is the adoption of the flood insurance study. The flood insurance study was not included in your, in your packet. The FIS, as we called it, consists of the methodology used to calculate the flood risk in the county. The FIS also includes floodway data tables and flood profiles of the rivers. So what you are looking at here on the map, going back to my first point here, is the proposed floodplain map. The area of study consisted really of the northern county line, north of the city of Nickerson. It flows southeast through the city of Hutchinson and kind of ends about two to three miles southeast of the city of Nickerson, and this is all in relation to the levee system with the city of Hutchinson and that certification. So, it's a kind of a broad view, what you're looking at here, but I can tell you that areas that are in yellow, those are going to stay the same. No changes in the floodplain designation. Areas in red are going to be added to the floodplain, and then areas in green are going to be removed from the floodplain. Of interest maybe to the commission, one of the big benefactors is probably going to be the city of Nickerson, where about half of the city will be removed. This map is available on my homepage of the website if you want to look at it here. This map is able to be zoomed in, so you can really get down to a national parcel detail to see exactly what areas are going to be removed and which ones are going to be included. So, you go further on down the Arkansas River toward Haven, that area is not included in the, in the studies, so that is going to still look the same. And like I said before, the Buell area and the Little Arkansas River, that is not included. That'll be part of another project that is, that is coming up, and so that's just kind of a broad sense of what the new floodplain maps are going to look like. Once January 29th comes around, then this map will be uploaded and available on the website, and the other paper maps will be effective. Until that such date, the current map will be the one that we will use. Third component, and really the most important one here, is really the adoption of the floodplain regulations, which you do have in your packet. Unlike the zoning regulations, though, the floodplain regulations go countywide. Any man may change to designated areas in the floodplain requires a permit, so this would include structures, dirt, installation of a culvert, construction of a bridge, wetland enhancements, say for hunting or other purposes, or changing a stream channel. All those require state permits as well as local permits from me. In exchange for adopting these floodplain regulations and requiring permits, FEMA will make available federally-backed flood insurance to all citizens here, but failure to adopt the regulations will mean that no new flood insurance policies will be issued. All of the existing flood insurance policies will expire when they come due, and then we could possibly lose a lot of federal funding, you know, if we are not in the National Flood Insurance Program or the NFIP. What I'd like to point out is that these regulations, under consideration today, are the minimum standards under FEMA and state guidelines. Most of the other requirements are just carryovers from our existing current floodplain regulations. There are really no new regulations that are of a higher standard than what is the minimum requirement under the federal or state requirements, so we did not set any other higher standards than what is the minimum that we have to adopt. An example of a higher standard would be if we wanted to make everybody build a house, say, two foot above base flood elevation. That's a higher standard. Right now, you're required to be one foot. There's nothing in this ordinance here that we have that is a higher standard than what is the minimum. One item that we did remove, just for your consideration, that's in our current regulations, is what we call a cumulative improvement. A cumulative improvement is if a person wants to improve a structure that's in the floodplain, if all those improvements equal something that is 50% or greater than the fair market value of that structure over a five-year period, then that entire structure would have to be elevated or made to be in compliance with the regulations. And so, a quick example would be, you know, if you have a house that's in a floodplain and it's worth $50,000, if you put $100,000 addition onto that house, the entire structure has to be elevated rather than just the new addition. That was removed. We discussed that internally with staff here, and we felt that was maybe a little bit too restrictive, so we took that out. But that is something that the commission can put back in if you so desire. Regulations also provide requirements for such items, say as manufactured homes, storage of materials or equipment in the floodplain. We also do agricultural structures. As you may know, agricultural structures are exempt from zoning regulations, however, agricultural structures are not exempt from floodplain regulations. Non-agricultural accessory structures are also regulated with the floodplain regulations, but also critical facilities, so fire stations, police stations, hospitals, those types of things are also regulated through our floodplain regulations. As I said previously, the regulations also require houses to be elevated at least one foot above base flood elevation.
Is that the first floor level?
Yes, that'd be the first floor level.
Okay.
First floor, no basements in a floodplain, first floor level, at least one foot above base flood elevation. Accessory structures of all types also have to be elevated at least one foot above that base flood elevation, but also accessory structures may be what we call wet floodproof or dry floodproof based off of, you know, how big the size of the structure it is. Regulations also do allow for variances from our floodplain regulations, so there are provisions in there. If somebody chooses not to meet the regulations and they feel they're overly restrictive, there is a variance process. It's not something that I highly recommend. We do a lot of those of, but there are provisions in there to allow stuff like that if we chose to do that. A variance procedure would go through our Board of Zoning Appeals. It would not come before this board. So, right now, if the commission prefers, you can table this request and study the regulations more or make suggestions, changes there. There is still time. We just have to have this adopted, and it has to be published in the paper no later than January 29th to be in compliance. So, I know it's a lot. It's like a pretty big document here, and if you wanted to, you can have time to study it more, think about it, ask questions, but what I would say in my closing comment really is that any changes that you want to make to this document, we have to take it back to the state because they have to be able to review that and make sure that what you are wanting to change is in compliance with the minimum standards here. But there is some time, so that's kind of why this is on the agenda right now, rather than after the first of the year, because I want to give the commission time to, you know, look at this, and if you want changes, we need to have time to be able to make that change, take it back to the state, and then come back before this board with that change. What I would add, and I kind of skipped over here, is this is actually the flood insurance study here. I did not include it to you, but, you know, it's a bunch of numbers for the floodway. It's the base flood elevations. It's also a bunch of profiles in here. I did not believe that the commission... But there is some time, so that's kind of why this is on the agenda right now, rather than after the first of the year, because I want to give the commission time to, you know, look at this, and if you want changes, we need to have time to be able to make that change, take it back to the state, and then come back before this board with that change. What I would add, and I kind of skipped over here, is this is actually the flood insurance study here. I did not include it to you, but you know, it's a bunch of numbers for the floodway, it's the base flood elevations, it's also a bunch of profiles in here. I did not believe that the commission even looked at and reading through this, but it's certainly available for you guys to, to look at should you chose to do something like that. So with that, that concludes my, my comments here, so I would stand for any questions or you can open up for any other public comments.
Questions, Mark on this item?
Yeah, Mark, I've got two or three here. Is it, is it still the same in here that you don't have to go back through the state but just go through FEMA? Should you desire to question the altitude in the floodplain areas to where you could have a surveyor come out and survey that property that the, the structure's sitting on that would allow it to be taken out if the altitude is high enough?
The elevation, okay.
Elevation, excuse me.
Actually, that, yeah, the elevation. That's actually a FEMA process, and so it goes through FEMA. It's not something that, that I review and approve. It, it's a document that FEMA reviews and so...
Still available.
A citizen, yeah, it's definitely still available, so if there's a situation, like with these new maps, for example, where somebody believes that their house is out of the floodplain and sits up on a, on a hill, they can certainly hire a surveyor now, and if those elevations are at or above the base flood, then they can apply to FEMA to have that structure or the surrounding area removed from the floodplain. We can't change the map, and a LOMA process does not change the map, but that document effectively says that that structure is out of the floodplain. I have that in my records for future use, and it's available to the public as well for future, say, buyers of that property.
Did they add some new regulations regarding ingress and egress from a property? I thought I read in there that that, the roadway ingress and egress had to be above the floodplain? Is that?
For, for critical facilities.
For what?
For critical facilities, so for like your...
It's only critical facilities?
Yeah, it'd be just for, yeah. Right, it's not a home, yeah. So because, you know, you don't want to have a, a fire station that may be out of the floodplain, however, the access road to get to that fire station is like in the floodplain, and then the roadway will, will be underwater, and then the fire station would not be able to access their, their equipment.
Can you take out and plant trees within the floodplain without a permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we do not regulate that.
And can a person apply for, say they want a, an in-ground tornado shelter in the floodplain rather than a, build a safe room? They have to go through the, your process to do that?
They do. It would be a floodplain permit, and we again would look at access because during flooding times, we don't want to obviously have the door that'd be underwater. You know, it would not be recommended to put a, an in-ground tornado shelter in the floodplain for that reason. That's why, you know, they do have those safe rooms, but it's possible they could do something like, like that as long as that door's at least that one foot above base flood, because tornado shelter usually going to have rain, and depending on how long you're in there, you don't want to have floodwaters coming in and going inside that tornado shelter.
I just didn't, I just wanted to know if that was possible, not all the details.
Uh, yeah, yeah, but a tornado shelter, man-made development in a floodplain requires at least a permit through me, may require a permit through the state as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Do counties ever, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, please.
Do counties ever say we're not, we're going to opt out of it and not participate, or is there 100% participation in this?
No, there's some cities, and I think some counties would probably say that they, they do not want to belong in the program. I think a lot of those cities, you know, don't have a lot of floodplain. You know, there's some cities in Reno County that are not in the NFIP or the National Flood Insurance Program, but for the fact that they don't have any floodplain in, in their, their community, so they don't see any reason to, to have something like that. But I think, you know, a lot of it is, there's a lot of federal funding that is tied to this program here, so I think a lot of counties are in it whether they really want to be or not.
And it said in there that eight people or residences, or I forget what the unit was, ended up on the wrong side of the change. What's the ramification for those folks?
You're, you're talking about the LOMA or the summary of map actions, and so through this whole process, FEMA goes back and looks at all the letters of map amendment that were done, letters of map revision based on fill, which is where somebody brings in dirt to elevate a structure. Reason for that, that, those changes is the fact that the base flood has changed. You know, back when that structure was built and back when that, that LOMA or LOMAF was issued, it was at a certain elevation, and through development, through the development process, you know, upstream or downstream here, it causes that base flood elevation rise, because every time you bring in dirt, you're, you're having the floodwaters with less capacity to have, handle those floodwaters, and so the base flood changes. It makes, you're squeezing the water, so it makes the base flood rise. And so unfortunately, yes, some of those people, they just built too low. They built to the minimum standard and it was fine, they built one foot above base flood elevation, but when you do that, you run the risk of the map changing and the elevations changing, and then when you do that, they got caught. If they would have done maybe two foot, then they'd probably still be safe, you know, in there, but...
So what happens to them? They can't get insurance?
Nope, nope, they can get insurance. No, the insurance is still in effect. It'll be probably a higher rate because they, they're not going to be as high above the base flood elevation as they were previously, but it doesn't excuse them from being able to purchase flood insurance or anything like that. If they have a mortgage on the property, then they have to buy flood insurance. If they don't have a mortgage on the property, they do not have to buy that, that mortgage. The, the purchase flood insurance requirement is if you have a federally backed mortgage on, on that property.
So they're not being forced to do anything?
No, no, no. It's just that, that process that removed them from the floodplain is now unfortunately no longer, you know, in effect. And like I said, what he, what Mr. Stefan is referring to is, you know, is about 10 people were notified by me that their process, you know, that either they did or a previous owner did was no longer going to be valid, and that report kind of lists why. It's usually a change in the, in the base flood elevation and stuff, but yeah, they're not being forced to, to do anything. You know, if, if they would choose to pay off their mortgage, then they don't have to purchase that, that flood insurance or anything like that.
Would you mind moving that map around a little bit so we can see the whole county, or is that possible?
I don't have the capability, it's...
All right. I need to do that. Mark, better explain to me, you touched on it, you said that the red is going in is because of changes within the floodplain itself that make that property now susceptible to flooding, and conversely, the green is those same changes now make those properties out of the floodplain?
Right, right.
What, what, give me an example of what takes place within this yellow area that causes the red and the green?
Well, the, the yellow area i- is part of the, the Arkansas River Zone AE floodplain, which is what we call a detailed study. That means that, you know, representatives and engineers from FEMA have gone out, studied the river, this is what they determine the base flood.
I understand that.
I think the, the biggest thing that I can explain, Mr. Chairman, I think with that is, is LiDAR, you know, especially the Cow Creek area and, and the rest of the area that's designated as floodplain. This wasn't based off of LiDAR. It was just based off of modeling, computer modeling, and what LOMAs and LOMAFs were, were available at that time. And so when you incorporate LiDAR in there, ultimately what you get is a better map because it's based off of ground elevations versus computer modeling.
Okay, so this, this is a better map?
This is a much better map. Depending on if you're red or green on that, you may or may not like that, that map, but at least I hope what I can get across to everybody is that at least it's the best technology that we have available right now. It's based off of ground elevations. I think the, the plus or minus, you know, accuracy is like a foot to two foot, and so what that means is that, you know, the, the LiDAR is saying that you're at a certain elevation, let's use the example of 1,500 feet. If you go out there to that same spot, your elevation should be really no higher than 1,502 or 1,498. And so at least the end result is going to be a, a better map. We're also doing studies down in the Nenexka River Valley area, and then there's actually a new study, we were a part of a conference call on for the Little Ark River, and so those projects are probably four to five years out, but I think we are starting to look at that too, and those will also be based off of LiDAR. So, yeah, we hope that, you know, at least the map is about as accurate as, as technology will allow right now.
And, and the city of Willowbrook itself is not in the floodplain as of today?
Uh, city of Willowbrook, for the most part, is not in the floodplain. Unfortunately, there are going to be some areas inside Willowbrook that are in the floodplain, just like there's going to be some areas inside, if you recall, Mr. Chairman, you know, the, the Ring Levee. If you zoom into Willowbrook area, you'll see some areas inside there that are, are red. Those areas are, are going to be in the floodplain. There's an aerial photo that you can turn on under the base maps if you want to see houses, but I think what you'll see there is the floodplain kind of goes around the house, because usually when you build a house, you'll have like a little pad of dirt. Because of that, you know, because here's a situation where the levee's now certified, so you should be having some protection, but what you have is what they call ponding. So if you think of it essentially as, as a bowl, you know, you create a bowl, so the water that's falling inside during a rainstorm has nowhere to, to go to escape, and so that's what you're seeing there with some of that floodplain. That's what you will see down in the Pennington addition, actually inside the Ring Levee and certain other areas is a ponding effect where water has no way to escape, and so therefore FEMA's mapping it as, as being in the floodplain.
So that's why you see part of, portion of Hutchinson in there is more ponding than anything?
Ponding, but, but they do have some internal, you know, rivers, you know, they have the Harsha Canal, and then they have Cow Creek that runs through the, the city, so they're actually have that river system. They might have some ponding effect a little on the west side of, of the city there that you see, but I think what you're seeing in the southeast part of the city, and I'm not the expert on that, but I think that's Cow Creek that's going through the city like that, and so again...
The Cow Creek is channeled also.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wouldn't think that would be, unless it's backup from Ark River.
It'd be backup, it'd be backup from the Ark.
That'd be the only reason I could see.
When the Ark River fills up, then that water has no way to go but to back up through the Harsha Canal and, and the, and the city like that. And even though it's channeled, that channel may not be sufficient enough to carry a 100 year storm event or a 1% annual flood chance, and so therefore during a 1% annual chance, it's going to flood like that the same.
Mark, doesn't the city have a project going on right now to do some work in that Cow Creek southeast area to improve that flooding? Are you familiar with that?
I am somewhat familiar with that, that's obviously city and, and stuff, but yeah, I've, I've seen some, you know, some articles on that, yeah, I think...
My understanding is they're trying to, in that area that we're looking at in the southeast part of the city, trying to change the creek itself so that less area floods from that backup that you're referring to.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't know, I'm not familiar with the entire project here, but I know that the city is actively purchasing properties in that area to try and have enough land to be able to change that channel, but to reduce flooding risks to citizens in that area, so they have purchased several properties in that, in that area.
Okay, are there other questions of Mark on this item?
If you drop down to South Hutch, just so, and, and touch a little bit on what they're doing, or looking at doing in South Hutchinson?
I'm not too familiar with the, the city of South Hutch, what they're doing. I, I understand, you know, that there was a lot of concern when this map came out in the red area that you see there, because all that area at one time was protected by the levee system, and now, as you see with the new map, that is slated to be in the floodplain come January here. I know at one time the city of South Hutchinson, I believe, was looking at hiring an engineer and doing a, a project, if you will, to try and reduce some of the, the flooding effects in that area. I have not heard anything on my end of where that project is or what they're actually looking at doing, but I know that they were looking at trying to, you know, one option would be to try maybe install pumps to try and pump that water back over, over the levee to try and reduce that, but I have not heard anything, you know, since, for a long time on that.
For how many years are these maps good?
Until the next update, there's really no...
And that's unknown?
It's unknown, until the next update. I mean, the current maps that we have, Mr. Chairman, is 2010, and so, you know, they're 10 years old right now, and so I would suspect probably at least 10 years, 10 to 15 years. Like I say, we're starting in the very, very early stages of, you know, doing a project down in the, in the south part of the county, but also up in the Beulah area to take in the rest of that area. So as far as updates go, you know, that's really dependent on FEMA money and how much money FEMA doles out to, to the state, and there's always a big push, you know, at the federal level to increase mapping. I mean, that's what we need, because there's a lot of communities that don't have digital products. There's a lot of communities that just are working off the old dot matrix paper maps, which were like 1990 or even before, where the, I know Keenan County is, is that way right now. They have the old, old paper maps, they're just like a dot matrix printer.
I'm sure South Hutchinson had lots of conversations over this, but I, I can remember even in 93, when the Ark River was really high, flooding was not a concern, there was some groundwater pressure coming up, but that's kind of perplexing to me.
Yeah.
Did anything trigger the redo of this map?
Yeah, in, in my, my write-up here, it was the Hutchinson levee system, as we had discussed previously in there. FEMA and the RE Corps engineers came out with a mandate after Hurricane Katrina that essentially said that they wanted to have all the levee systems certified, meaning that they are actually providing protection, because they're not just piling dirt in there with no compassion and, and no what they call freeboard or elevation above that base flood. So, so when they came out with that mandate, back in 2005, actually, it was here, the county and these cities were involved in that and signing an agreement that says that yes, we will actually go through the process and certify our levee. Commissioner Soll, you might have been on the city council at that time. Yeah, when that happened. So then, when we signed that agreement, we said, okay, we are going to certify our levee system, that it does actually provide the protection that we say it does. If we didn't do that, then, then they would map floodplain behind that levee as if it wasn't even there. And so, you know, there's a lot more information with that, but what triggered that was when that got adopted, we adopted the new maps in 2010, and there was an agreement, it's called the PALAGRAM, or the Provisionally Accredited Levee System, and that essentially warned citizens that, hey, if you're going to buy property in the city of Hutchinson or the South Hutchinson, be aware that if that levee is not certified, that it could be mapped in the floodplain. So we signed that, the city of Hutchinson for many years went through that process to get the levee system certified. After that certification is done, that now, that agreement has to be removed. If you look at our current floodplain maps, the paper version, that agreement is still on there, so that PAL agreement has to come off the maps, and so that's one way that what kind of triggered everything, but the other thing was the fact that those maps are 10 years old, things do change, technology changes, and so funding was available to be able to, to update this map, but, but the driving force was removing that PAL agreement.
Are there other comments before we close the public hearing?
Does containment of the water in a normal drainage canal, the containment of that water that would come off of, of property that would increase the stream flow in a dry creek area, does that enter into any help with floodplain?
That's probably an engineered question. I, I would say probably it, it could. I'd say, well, yeah. I mean, they're going to look at the surrounding area, the slope, that's what the LiDAR helps with, they're going to look at the slope of, of the land and how much water is flowing into that, that channel as well to help determine what actually should be mapped as floodplain and what shouldn't be.
I know that was done in South Hutchinson several years ago, and that's, I wondered if that was not the reason why.
Well, you know, and the city of Hutchinson undertook a, a study on the, on the GVI north of town, right there, and that channel was determined that it could contain a 100 year storm event, so consequently the map was revised up there, and they did it, it's Plum Creek, and so that study actually went all the way up to, to 82nd. If you look at the, the revised floodplain map on that, you'll see that Plum Creek is just like a trickle now when you get up to like 82nd area. So they were able to reduce their flooding in there, so that's one thing that the city of South Hutchinson could do, you know, as well.
Are there any more comments before we close the hearing?
I don't know if anybody else wants to, to speak, or...
Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to speak on the, during the public hearing on the revised floodplain regulations resolution? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Does the commission wish to do anything today on the adoption of this floodplain resolution? do anything today on the adoption of this floodplain resolution?
What would be the resolution number? Should we do that? This had been going on for a long time. There's been public meetings, so forth, regarding this, and uh I think it's in the best interest, unfortunately, of of the of those with having a ability to have insurance. Uh so uh I would move to adopt a revised flood floodplain resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four, an updated paper and digital copies of the flood insurance rate maps for the Cal Creek watershed and a portion of the Arkansas River watershed, and an updated flood insurance study.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I'll second that. Is there discussion to the motion? Hearing no discussion. Call for the question. Please call roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Steffen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to business items, item A is a Sparks Fund update by Gary Maggar, uh the Reno County Cares Act consultant. Gary, thank you for being here. Thank you for your patience with us this morning.
No problem. Thank you, commissioners, for giving me some time to uh come before you today to give you an update on where we are with the uh the Cares Act funding. Uh we've been here several times, either John Deardorff or myself, uh working with uh county staff to uh give you some updates on uh the uh Cares Act funding program. Uh as you may recall, uh the county received twelve million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight eighty-four dollars um to distribute to the community. Uh we distributed basically all that money to uh the uh public organizations such as schools, cities, special districts, and then to uh we had a program to distribute money to uh the nonprofits. Uh one of the questions that has come up recently and we've been tracking, uh first of all, we we only have uh thirty-seven days uh between now counting today and twelve-thirty, because twelve-thirty is the deadline for uh if there's goods uh purchased to have ha- uh have those goods, receive those goods, pay for them, and have them in use. So we're coming very close to the time when we have to kind of wrap this up as far as the purchasing. The actual reporting uh will continue or can continue until March. Uh the the state just recently uh the the initial uh report uh initial final report uh was uh supposed to be due on January twentieth. Uh the state just just recently, last week, gave us a little bit more uh flexibility, allowing uh the final report to go in on uh March seventeenth. So uh it's still a very short timeframe with uh uh all the things that need to occur between now and and in the end. Uh Leslie's doing a great job in tracking that, and I think it'll it'll help the county later on if there would be a an audit. But as we look at uh the amount of money that might be available, we've been trying to keep close contact with the various uh groups, uh organizations, and have identified that there's uh four four hundred and forty-five thousand that would be available that we could redistribute uh in the in the community. Uh John and I are aware that um uh the State Fair is a uh something that this governing body has discussed, and uh we've explored that uh pretty thoroughly uh with uh the State Office of Recovery and various sources to try to find out how money could be distributed. I do want to say that since the the memo went out yesterday, and I apologize you got it so late, but we were working on this uh extensively up until yesterday. Um I think it says in your memo that the uh State Fair uh has expended approximately twenty-one thousand in wages. When they first uh the State Fair did apply under public agencies, since it is a public agency, they were in that uh first round of 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 funding, and they have they uh submitted uh uh requests for six thousand four nine hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. Uh and that was for uh costs associated with trying to deal with uh the coronavirus. I don't know uh each specifically without going to all my notes exactly what they, but it would be probably things like PPE and things like that. Uh that's all it was applied for. Since that time, uh and the most recent number I have, I got late yesterday after your memo went out, is actually they believe they have forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars that would be eligible for reimbursement for wages. So uh if they would, of course, have to provide documentation of that, and if that's is the case, um you could uh, we could give them another, or we recommend you give them them another forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighteen uh dollars uh for the State Fair for the wages associated with the COVID-nineteen. The Fairgrounds is another nonprofit organization. Of course, that that organization is set up to support uh the fair. Um they had uh loss of revenue because nonprofit organizations can receive uh reimbursement for loss of revenue, whereas public agencies cannot. Uh they did have, um they they reported uh loss of revenue of a hundred and three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. And so uh staying with the program that we developed, we did pay them twenty-five percent of that, because that's what the program wa- uh indicated that we would pay. And so they did receive initially the Kansas Fair Foundation, Fairgrounds Foundation, twenty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Um so we would recommend that you go back and and because of Kansas Fairgrounds Foundation does support the fair, uh pay them a hundred percent of the amount that uh of their loss of revenue. Uh so an additional seventy-seven thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Uh and then that could be used to help support uh some of the costs uh the of the State Fair that that they were out because of some of their expenses. There's a couple of other things I want to mention. Uh Bright House uh is the sexual assault domestic violence uh organization, and they uh they applied through the portal, and we're not really sure what happened, but uh they're uh when they, all the uh nonprofit organizations were applying online, and so all that data was stored on the portal. Uh for whatever reason, that information wasn't saved, but they did have copies of that uh information that they put on the portal, and they showed it, and we went uh, they contacted us, we uh went back to that and and determined that, for whatever reason, there was a glitch, that it didn't get saved. They were reporting revenue loss of twenty-eight thousand, so we would recommend that um with some of this excess funding or available funding, that uh they be given the twenty-five percent like the other nonprofit or organizations or seven thousand dollars. The Cosmosphere um is another organization that applied under the nonprofit. Uh they had indicated a loss of revenue of two million dollars. The uh initially, uh the committee uh made the recommendation because uh we didn't have enough funding to fund them at twenty-five percent of their lost revenue. Uh we we recommended three hundred thousand, uh which is about fifteen percent. Uh so we would recommend with the additional uh or this four hundred and forty-five thousand is available, you could fund them an additional two hundred thousand, which puts them up to twenty-five percent like the other nonprofit organizations. If you if you followed uh the recommendations that we're making uh on those particular organizations, it would total three hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, so it would have a remaining uh hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars, basically. Uh I'm not using the cents, but you'd have about a hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars that then you could distribute to back to the nonprofit organizations that applied. We had twenty-seven nonprofit organizations that applied uh either for loss in revenue or for what we call incurred or future expenses. Uh the incurred or future expenses were uh those expenses that were directly uh dealing with uh COVID-nineteen situations. It could be buying PPE, uh putting up flex class uh dividers, uh you know, all those kinds of sanitation, uh sanitizing uh the premises, uh you know, all those kinds of things. So it doesn't give you much money. Now, we we did consider, because there aren't a lot of needs in the community, there's no question about it. We did consider uh the um possibility if opening up a another program. There's been a lot of ideas thrown out. The only problem is, we have so little time between now and that twelve-thirty deadline. It would be very difficult to uh put put it together, a program, have it approved by the state, and then try to implement that program, unfortunately. So.
Okay, so uh your letter uh is a draft of what you're asking for us to do with the change of uh the State Fair allocation from up twenty-one thousand to forty-five nine eighteen?
That's correct, and I would say that uh it's our understanding that the state legislature is still working on, you know, what perhaps they can do to uh provide uh funding to the fair. I mean, the fair is a, for the most part, they they look at it as an enterprise fund, or basically it pays for itself, and I think what they're trying to do, they realize the loss of revenue uh has a huge impact, and I think the state legislature, as I understand it, is trying to look at money that might be available to help uh to help the fair, but I've not not been involved in those conversations.
What do we know the as to the legitimacy that they were told they were gonna get a million dollars, how how from the from the state? How secure do we think that is?
When I talked to Ed, I mean, it sounded like that was certain, but that always can change, I guess.
But he felt like it was certain. Okay, it helped. Walk me through the numbers on the State Fair here. You you've we've given them twenty-one thousand already.
No, no, we haven't. No, we uh, what happened was, we've we've given them six thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. And uh as of yesterday, when this report went out, they had indicated to us that they had identified uh twenty-one thousand that could be uh reimbursed because of wages. They changed that after this memo went out, and they've they said, uh, they did the calculations, it would be forty-five thousand nine eighteen.
So you're recommending forty-five thousand to them, the seventy-seven thousand some to the foundation?
Foundation.
Okay, so that's that's a hundred and twenty-two thousand, something like that, yeah. You know, obviously, our goal is to end up with a bunch of bunch of viable nonprofit organizations. How confident do we feel that with with a hundred and twenty-two thousand from us and a million from the state that they uh that they're viable in the the next in the next September?
I don't, my in my conversations with Ed, Mr. Berger, they are still gonna need more money. I think he said two fifty, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a month in cost to operate the fair right now. This was ninety, the fair was ninety percent of their budget. I think they were needing over two two million.
They were originally asking two point three. Would you, and I've heard this number, I don't remember. Do you know how much they have in the foundation and in the community foundation?
I I don't.
I wish I I wish I remembered that. Uh and I don't. It it, it's a fine line to walk. Incredibly fine. You know, and I I I, the people from the State Fair have have talked to me a lot, so I'm just more familiar with with their situation than I am the Cosmosphere. Obviously, we need the Cosmosphere, and we want the Cosmosphere in every way, shape, or form. Do we do we need to be doing some strategizing on that balance that who, you know, looking at that two hundred thousand dollars that could go to the Cosmosphere, is that the best place for Reno County to spend that money? Or are they far more financially viable at present, where they could they could weather the storm of us not giving them the two hundred? And again, I I don't even like the way that sounds. Forgive me.
I understand.
And like you say, it's a delicate balance. I I just want, I want to feel confident that we're using those dollars to keep as many entities afloat as possible. Understand what I'm saying?
Well, and that and that's part of what this is uh uh all about, is an opportunity for you to take a look at it. Uh if you would like to try to utilize that two hundred thousand dollars in a different way, uh we would just need to know or understand what you want to to do with that. I mean, as long as it meets the the guidelines um of of the uh of the Cares Act, uh we could we could go ahead and
Move it around.
possibly do that. For example, if you said, well, we don't want to uh uh give the Cosmosphere the two hundred thousand. Uh part of part of what our what our thinking was uh with the with the Cosmosphere was the fact that uh, of course, it is a large organization. They do have a lot of fundraising that they weren't able to they weren't able to have some camps and various things this year, so I don't know uh exactly where they are today with regard to their finances. Uh but one of the things that, you know, that 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 the state does look at when we when we distribute money is that we're not cherry picking. Uh we're not treating some organizations differently than others, and so we thought uh they were they were only given fifteen percent. Obviously, uh that's a still a large chunk of change. They received uh out of the nonprofits, they did receive the most money because uh their losses were were a lot greater as far as loss of revenue. They have bigger budgets than a lot of the other organizations that we were uh that that applied. Uh but that was that was part of part of the thinking, trying to make it fair across the board. If you want to look at, uh are you suggesting that we uh combine the two hundred thousand with the uh hundred and fourteen thousand and distribute that across the, or or how how would you propose to do that?
I'm just I'm just trying to make sure that we're not throwing a little bit of money at the State Fair that's not gonna ultimately get them over the hump.
Well, one of the things that, one of the things that I do want to uh you to know, that we we did spend a lot of of time looking at the various angles within the guidelines of the uh uh the Office of Inspector General, who who puts together the um uh uh the guidelines for the regulations for the Cares Act money, and we look and we've talked uh uh with some of the state people that administer this and trying to look at ways that we could possibly do it. The way we're proposing is really about the only way we can do this and meet the the guidelines uh that we uh, otherwise, we tried to, you know, look at all alternatives that uh might be out there. Unfortunately, with the restrictions, this is really about the only way we can do it and still meet those guidelines.
It'd still leave us trying to channel that money back through the state and to the State Fair, which is did did you all?
We talked a little bit with on the Sparks Fund. We talked with our advisor a little bit about that, and that's not something that he's able to do. That that would be more legislative, but probably not with the Sparks money, cause it has to be used by December thirtieth. So for other money, they they can't give it to the State Fair either. That's part of money. That would be other legislative um budgeting techniques, I guess, that would need to take place in twenty-twenty-one. Because I think the State Fair is probably going to need even more than this for future. They're they're gonna need more additional assistance.
So you're telling me you don't feel like that's possible with this money?
With this money.
Back through and.
Not with this money.
Right, cause the state is under the same regulations we are. Those are federal regulations, and so they have to comply with the same same regulations.
It sounded like they had s- some money that they had more latitude with, if if they've told them they're gonna give them a million dollars. told them they're going to give them a million dollars.
But, yeah, but this pot, this pot that the federal government gave to the state that give to the public entities, that's the requirements that we're under. So it cannot be used for the state fair.
But again, at the end of the day, you don't feel like this money, we're going to have any luck rerouting this money and getting it to the fair?
Correct, from the people we've talked to.
That's the bottom line for me.
I think one of the things we did that didn't cost any money was just recently, unlike Sedgwick County that limited any events to 100, that we didn't limit in our health order any specific number. And that, to me, that would allow them to have events based upon the criteria. So they could have events larger and still allow some events to come in rather than cancel, like Sedgwick County, Wichita had, was events canceled because they put a number on. And so that was my thought on, on, on the numbers, is we don't limit, we never, we limit other ways, but they could still have those events, and that maybe would help out.
And they, and the state fair has been, obviously, as you all know, and I think you're telling me, they've been doing that to try to raise money.
But to make sure they still could.
Well, I'm going to throw out there next, then, you know, you, your first step, you're incredibly fair on a percentage basis, and I think that's a great start. I think we should at least discuss the concept now to, to have some conversations with all those entities, to try to get a feel for, do we have somebody who's really upside down and looking at closing their doors? And, and maybe preferentially guiding some of this remaining money to help preferentially prevent a nonprofit entity from going, from closing. I, I don't, I, I would, I would, I think we ought to look at a little different approach to the rest of this money. Can we save anybody with it?
Okay, my, my comments, and I share the first thoughts of Commissioner Stefan on his thought and seriousness about the state fair allocations. It seems like to me, if you're going to do the 45,918 on wages, and then the 77, we're, we're being consistent with the funding there. I, I'm not sure how I feel about 200 more to the Cosmosphere, but certainly, they did take a big hit, and we did not fund them to the 25%, so maybe there's some merit there to doing that. I, I wouldn't be opposed to approving this plan with this remaining, and if the nonprofit organizations, I think Gary, we had around 114,329 left, we may be take another week, go back and look at those charts, and if they, somebody wants to beg, so be it. I, I think Commissioner Stefan has a point there, that there might be one or two that could make a plea for an additional, bigger percentage than how that might be allocated. Gary, would you be happy with approval of this plan, as you presented today, with us waiting a week or two on the remaining 114,000,329?
Yes, that would be, that would certainly be acceptable to me. And whatever information you would like John or I to provide you, or contacts you'd like to have us make, we'd certainly be glad to do that.
Do you anticipate there may be some additional funds available in addition to that 114, or?
No. Now, let me just say that the, the, the agencies or the organizations we've gone to and, and worked through this to get to the 445,000 available, you know, there, obviously, you can't overspend, so there may be a little bit of underspending. For example, I mean, will, will a school district maybe have 20,000 left over? That's possible. We won't know that until we get closer to the, to the end. But at this point, and we've asked them to, you know, give us their best estimate and, and work with them as closely as we could, this is what we're coming up with. So I think that, because I think that the goal has been to do as much good with this money as we could in our community, and I think they understand that also. And we've tried to really emphasize that, to use what they've been awarded. But if there are, if there is money available, we certainly would like to re-channel that and, and do as much good. So I think they understand that, because there are a lot of needs in our community.
Is the museum part of the Cosmosphere?
Yes.
So that 200,000 includes the museum?
Oh, which, oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking Stradica. Are you talking about the, the county museum?
Yes.
Yeah, county museum's part of Stradica.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and Stradica did receive money.
I'm taking, I, never mind, I'm off the matter. Thank you.
Commissioner Hurst, how do you feel about the direction that Commissioner Stefan is asking us to move on to generally approve of what is stated here, but to get more information from the nonprofits before we distribute that money?
That's kind of where you were at, Mark.
Yeah, pretty much.
I like the idea that we're trying to get that 25%.
There's something on your mind that you're not quite saying, Commissioner Stefan.
You know me, I don't like to talk.
Yeah, huh?
No, I, I really don't. I really don't. I'm still just racking my brain, trying to think out, think how we could just make sure we keep these entities viable. And, and we, I don't want to overlook an opportunity. I don't want to miss somebody or something. Okay, you know, and, and I don't want to sound like I'm picking on the Cosmosphere, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, they, and, and again, they have, they have probably the biggest budget of all of them that apply. Now, I will say that, you know, there are a lot of organizations, I mean, the 27 that applied, there are a lot of those that, that, that this has had a big impact, because the type of services they provide, maybe there's a bigger demand because of the services they provide, or because this has impacted their ability to raise funds and all that. So it could be difficult, you know, the, to, to go back and determine which one is got the biggest needs.
Sure.
Or how much do you give this one versus that one? So those are going to be, those will be the challenges to, to determine and criteria. But there is, there is a lot of needs in the community.
I think we've tried to keep some consistency, and I, I guess I'd like to throw something out, and if the rest of the group doesn't like this approach, I'm very understanding of it, because there, there is no one perfect way, I don't think. What, what I think I would be the most comfortable with would be paragraph, state fair, State Fairgrounds Foundation, Breithouse, approve, approve $150,000 extra for the Cosmosphere, and put that 50,000 down to the nonprofits, because there's 27 of them, and give that 164,000,329 divided to the nonprofits via the percentages that they received before. That's just a thought, and if it's, if it doesn't have any thought by the other two of you, I understand. I, I, I'm fearful that we're not going to learn a lot, waiting a week from the nonprofits, and there's some of them that are very good spokesmen, and there's some of them that are pretty quiet, and we're going to hear from the loud ones. And, and I'm, we felt like those 27 groups were worthy before, and so I think they're worthy now. And so I just suggest that.
Commissioner, I think.
It's an awfully long statement, I apologize.
I think it's a great idea, because I think it, it falls and meets, you know, some of the guidelines that are out there, but it also gives them more money, the nonprofits. And I do, I will say that the nonprofits were very appreciative of this opportunity to, to receive money, and it's, it's helped a lot of them. I can't say it has made them 100%, but I can tell you that we've had a lot of appreciation expressed, and, you know, the.
Now, they'll still have to have qualified losses, but, but they already, we've already determined.
We've already determined.
See, we only filled them to 25%.
Yeah, okay. I'm not going, I'm not going to argue that at all.
If you'd make the motion, I think we'd, it'd be all right, because we've got potential having more money coming in right at the end, too.
Well, yeah, it, it, I think it's, it's a, it's a sound decision, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be against it at all.
Okay.
We've had a good discussion.
We, we have to approve this, I think, so is there a second to my motion to distribute it for my comments?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on this item? Please, color roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Stefan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Gary, again, I want to thank you for yours and John's hard work on this.
Thanks for talking about that.
If, as I understand it, this was Randy's idea to appoint you two to handle this, and, and it was brilliant, because if we would have done this any other way, we would have not done a good job. And I think we, we've read in the papers about other counties not getting these funds distributed well, and being, and those counties were very, some of them kept all the money for themselves, and, and I don't think that's right at all. I believe we've done a very, very good job of distribution.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for the opportunity to be involved in this. This has been a great experience for us, too, so thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item B under business items, which is the request of Commissioner Hurst to discuss the agreement with Tiera Health to provide pharmaceutical-led patient care for chronic commission conditions. We have with us Renee Harris, that is our HR director. Commissioner Hurst, you brought this up, would you please start this conversation?
The one thing that caught my eye was the fact that they're charging us $30 for the test strips for diabetes, and you can buy those for anywhere from $12 for 50 strips to $24 for 150 strips. And so my question was, what kind of a rebate is Tria getting back from their provider, and why should we have to pay so much more? I guess that's the first.
Okay, I can answer that. I did find, get some more information. The test strips, they show $30 for 50 count, a 60 cents each. That, when, when an employee goes and gets a prescription of anything, whether it's test strips, medication, whatever, what they're paying isn't the total cost of the item. County always has some pay on that, too. So they may be.
That's a retail cost, the $12 for, for 50 strips.
Right, but we have, we have some employees that do get them by prescription.
Pardon?
We do have some employees that have a prescription for their strips. I don't know the reason of that. I don't think that there's any reason they can't just keep getting their strips if they get them retail. I don't know, honestly, the difference, maybe doctors.
I don't think we should be obligated to pay a premium price.
But.
No, that's, that's the point.
But.
You're talking, retail's retail.
That $30, that, what the employee's getting, the identified employee that is eligible for this part of the program, they also get the AccuCheck Connect Meter Kit, which is a cellular kit that tracks everything toward a portal that the doctor can see that they can see. So they get that free, they get the LANsits free, they get the, the, the cost of all of that is included with the strip. So the meter, the LANsits, the solution, and the LANsit device itself is all included in that fee.
So we're not paying $30 for a strip?
We are, but we're not, they're not, the employee's not getting just strips for that, they're getting all of the equipment along with it.
Well, that's, that's, that's just, we're paying for it, it's not free.
Correct.
You know, there's, there's no free lunch.
But, yeah. But the county would have some additional money involved with the prescriptions part, the prescription parts of it, too. There isn't just an employee cost, the county always has some additional cost as well.
I, I have problems with that.
Are you suggesting, Commissioner Hurst, that we not approve this item?
Not, not if, if we're going to pay a premium.
Well, I've got a few questions yet, too. When I saw the deal, you know, my antenna immediately went up, because you're right off, first blush, it looks like we're lining up pharmacists to practice medicine. So, you know, I researched further, I looked up their website, looked through it, tried to develop a reasonable understanding, and, and, and it's, it's interesting, let's put it that way. I think one of your big risks in this is that when they guarantee you that they're going to save us more than it costs, you're going to end up with people on medications they don't want to be on, because they're, they're going to make a recommendation like somebody's on Selcept, and they have been for 15 years, and it works well for them to keep their autoimmune disorder under control. But you can put them on Prednisone, 10 milligrams a day, which costs pennies versus the thousands. But the side effects of taking Prednisone chronically is horrific, particularly to a young lady. But now, they've saved you, they show on paper, well, we recommended that she go from Selcept to Prednisone, we saved you $3,000. She refused to do it. I, I think there's a lot of bait and switch opportunity here. I'm not, from what I've heard from pharmacies around the area, they can help provide this service. I think this is, unfortunately, another step towards moving something out of our area into the big city. And I, I think we are exploring every opportunity to keep this, these, this advice, this medication advice local and, and not be moving it out elsewhere. I, I think it's an incredibly creative business idea on their part, and I'm jealous that they thought of it, and I didn't. But I don't, I, I'm really worried that, at the end of the day, there's going to be some real conflict between these recommended changes, because the only way they can save money is by going to generics or finding it cheaper somewhere else. And, and I, I think, I think it's premature. I think we ought to, ought to be talking with some of our local pharmacies, see what they could do for us, and I don't think it's a great idea to be jumping into this agreement right now.
I think probably what I, part of it, what I would like to you to hear, because you weren't here on the original presentation of it, was that the only, there isn't, the only chance to save money isn't switching somebody from medication. They, they may be able to go to generic, and that does or doesn't work. The part, the big part of it is this, is that what they will do, they will do is they will identify employees with chronic conditions that are taking, particularly those taking multiple medications. What they have found out is that a lot of employees don't talk to their pharmacist. They might well be with a local pharmacist they absolutely trust, they don't even have to participate in this. Nobody has to participate. This is just something that if they feel comfortable, if they don't have a pharmacist, they have a good relationship that they can trust, this may be an opportunity for them. If they have a chronic condition and they're taking multiple medications, their physician or themselves don't realize that the risk between taking the medications, these pharmacists at least are trained enough that if they say, well, I don't take it because it doesn't work, well, why is it not, what else are you taking, kind of thing? So they could get them to, to stop taking medications in lieu of something else, or multiple medications that don't work with each other. I do know that Finney County, Douglas County, Shawnee County, and Johnson County have all been doing this program for many years. Finney County actually just started it last year, I believe. And I did speak to two of those four counties, they've done it for quite a few years. They have seen the difference, because employees are able to change out medications or become healthier, other ways to reduce medications. And that does cost our plan. Every prescription we fill costs us right up front, the first $100,000. So. So, and I don't feel that those, actually, there was another county out listed on here, but they've had it for many years and I just, I was very concerned about getting references from them because I don't feel that any of those counties would continue to be with the program if a couple of things, either they weren't saving money on it with their plan and the employees were uncomfortable and didn't like it and didn't, and they said their employees had really good things to say about the program and they appreciated having the contact. So.
Okay, go ahead, Ron.
I'm wondering if we gave a concerted effort with the wellness program. I think our local pharmacists do a lot of this same work now and we've talked about this from the get-go. That I think maybe if our wellness program would, would kick in and do some education wise and, and, and inform our employees better, you know, with regard to medical, with regard to the costs, so forth, I'm wondering if that isn't worth a try rather than this. Maybe I'm all wet. Doctor, you can probably help me out on that aspect.
I think, I think it's worth starting that way. Part of it is, is engaging the patient. And I think what, what Tria really does is they, they, they're able to create this document and, and they're, they do, they work very hard at engaging the patient. And in medicine, that's frequently the hardest part. You know, a lot of times the doctors and pharmacists care a whole lot more about somebody's health than the person does.
Right.
Yeah. And, and so I, I would rather see, see us give the local pharmacies and, and the wellness folks make a stronger new attempt to engage these folks who are on multiple medications. Cause it is, it's, it, it gets very complicated and it's worthy of review from, from a second line and pharmacists is a fine second line to do that. I'd sure like to take a run at keeping it local before we move it out.
The only thing about the wellness program is just like the wellness program now.
Pardon?
The only thing about asking us to do anything for the wellness program is that you've got HIPAA involved. There's no way I have any way to tell an employee, have an employee prove to me that they've made a concerted effort to make time with their pharmacist and their physician to go over their medications, check and see.
I'm not asking that.
No, but he's saying about the wellness program. Right, but I'm, I'm just saying that at least with this type of program, it's under HIPAA, they'll be able to report this, not anybody's names, not any of the details, but they'll be able to say, well, we've identified 195 employees that have a chronic condition. 60 have remained engaged with us, have, have given the information to their doctors and this kind of stuff. Whereas with the wellness program, I don't have any way to prove that they've done anything. We can certainly, I'm all for that. I would like to get employees, those employees more involved.
I think, I think what Commissioner Stephan is suggesting that maybe we need to explore all the local efforts to do this better. We have Walgreens, a local place that has national presence. We have Kroger, which has national presence to, to see what other capabilities might be here. And I, I hear two of the commissioners saying that this shouldn't be approved at this time. Is there a motion?
I think also when you mentioned the, the big names, you need to mention all the local independent.
I, I wasn't trying to rule anybody out.
I'm just, I knew you weren't wrong, but I just had to say that, okay?
Then I think it's just probably gonna be.
It's gonna take some procedures to make.
I think it's gonna be dead because I can't get access to that information from those pharmacies under the law, I cannot and the employees can't.
I've, I've got a little bit of a problem with, with employer micromanaging employee, employees' healthcare.
It's, it's not micromanaging, it's a voluntary thing. The employees have.
Your frustration seems to be that you're not gonna have to pay back what you want.
I'm just, I'm just saying that if we leave here and you want to hear from me next week how my, how my meetings with the pharmacist, it won't happen. I mean, and that's fine if that's what you want to choose. I'm just saying that I, I can't come back to you and say that we can do that because I know we can't, so.
Why don't you bring this back to us next year for consideration, Renee?
And a side note, I, I do understand that Prairie Star engages in basic center medical home concept with care coordinators as well. So there are, there are local entities that participate in that.
I, I'm not ready to agree to that, Tria, after looking at the contract further.
Okay.
But I, I'm grateful for your concern for your employees.
We do have an employee here in the county that's, we do have an employee in the county that's been part of his employee, his wife's employer worked for him. He loves it, he said it was the best thing ever. So I, I just talked to people who actually have been part of it for quite a while. So it wasn't like I just got that and said, let's just do this. researched it quite a bit, so.
Okay, thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the county administrators' report. Randy, what do you have for us today?
I have, I'm sorry, let me go up here, cause my top there's an echo. Legislative priorities. I have that on the agenda, just kind of bring that back. I've reached out to the local legislators to find a, a time in December. And I wanted to see the, I think it's the third week of December, 15th, 16th and 17th, if we had a work session down in the veterans' room, would any of those three days work for you? The legislators that I heard from directly said the week of the 7th. I think there's a, up in Topeka, there are some leadership discussions at the legislature, so that wouldn't work. So I was looking at maybe the middle of December, the one to see, obviously that is still a public meeting, but it wouldn't be here at the commission meeting, it'd be a work session. We could either do it up here or down in the veterans' room, but probably in the veterans' room.
You know, I've got, I've got some Tuesday, I've got some Friday time and then late afternoon on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. And in a lot of ways, you know, for me, in my schedule, you guys are gonna just catch me. And we're just gonna spend one-on-one time and get through it. And we will.
Yeah, I guess luckily, I guess your advantage is you're here, you get to hear the legislative priorities as a commissioner also, but as an incoming senator, it probably also would be nice to have you in that meeting. So like, would a Wednesday afternoon, like after 3 o'clock?
Yeah, after 3 for sure, 3:30, 4:00.
Let's make it, let's don't rush you. If you can make it, let's don't rush you in case something happens, okay?
The nurses don't like it when I have something or I have to be later in the day.
We don't want you to have problems on the rattlesnake road, okay?
I get it.
Are you suggesting December 16th at 4 o'clock?
Yes. That would be, yeah. If that would work for you, the, the couple of the legislators that I heard from said they're pretty open. If I give them a day and a time, they'll try to make that, so.
I sure love written material.
And with the legislative priorities, are there any, separate from the draft that I gave, I think last week, I did take off the appraiser when talking to Brad, there's really not anything on, on theirs from him other than, I think it was Senate Bill 294, which is the tax led, which is, or the transparency bill, which is already addressed in here. But if there's anything in the next month that you want, or next three weeks that you want on here, let me know and I'll continue to work on taking what case he has and what, from my perspective, what impacts Reno County the most.
Well, since we all got our tax statements this week, Randy, I think your tax statements are way too high. Food for thought there.
Yeah, yeah.
Other items, Randy?
Just to give you enough, just to let me know that Joe and I have been in contact with Ideatech about the contract that was discussed last week and the fiber connection to Public Works Building, that's also with CARES Act money, that we are working out the details of the language, but we're hoping to have at least for the ones for the Highlands here next week for you guys to look at.
Get the time.
There's a piece of information, if, I'd like for you to see if you can find.
Okay.
You know, basically all those, those government projects are, are bid separately. I'd like to know what the total bid on that job was.
On, for Ideatech?
Ideatech, yeah. I think that's easily find, could be easily located.
Okay.
I can push that off into you, I don't have to do it.
All right.
Is that it, Randy?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, commission report, commissioner reports and comments. Commissioner Stephan, please.
Well, like I mentioned earlier, I just want to go through some of what's gone on last week in regards to the, the virus. You know, last Thursday, there was a big national press conference with Vice President Fint, Vice President Pence, Fauci, the, the US general who was, who kind of delineated how they were gonna get the virus, or the vaccine out, and then the CDC Director Robert Redfield. And what he said, and this is 99% exactly what he said. He said, "Schools are the safest place for kids to be. They are not a source of new outbreaks and should remain open for in-person, in-person classes." And he went on to say, "Clearly, the data strongly supports K through 12 schools as well as institutes of higher learning really are not where we are having our challenges and it would be counterproductive from a public health standpoint to close them." And then he even added, he said, "Even last spring, they never recommended closings." Shortly after that, Dr. Fauci said, quote, "Keep the schools open." Yet by this Monday, Kentucky's Democrat governor announced a statewide closure of schools. Michigan's Democrat governor closed all high schools and universities to classroom teaching. And right in that, that time, New York City, which is the largest school district in the nation, moved back to all remote learning. And, and that's an issue. That's a big issue. And, and people overwhelmingly do want their schools open. And one of the, one of the, one of the comebacks from school boards, school administrators is that it takes more than just kids, it also takes teachers and staff and people who may be at risk. And to some degree, I, I think that's a legitimate statement. And, and with that in mind, I want to put at least a bug in our ear that when that vaccine starts to come down and become available locally, that we need to have prioritized some of these at-risk teachers and, and, and school support staff and get them vaccinated immediately to help alleviate that problem. And I do think we have the, the authority to, to, to recommend that that be done, to help facilitate these schools getting back in session. You know, other, and so I, I think, I think that should ultimately even be considered to be made a motion that we prioritize those folks to be at the very top, at, at, at least equal to the top of the list to be vaccinated. You know, other things to note, you know, the Florida Republican, Republican governor removed all restrictions in Florida back in September. They've had the same ebbs and flows and increases in cases we have. You know, the South Dakota governor has avoided all mandates and promotes self-responsibility and they've had the same case total and death total that, that most every other state has. We kind of went over how the KDHE and the media collaborated on misrepresenting the data on the, on the, on the counties that, that, that had mask mandates. They did clearly see a higher increase in cases than the unmasked counties. And that's the third time that we've had information, data come out from the state that was, that was just erroneously presented. It's, it's about mandates, it's really not about the effectiveness of masks, it's pretty clear. You know, we cannot forget the collateral damage. And, and, and that's, that all ties into the CDC saying the schools gotta be open and in-person. They are moving to the focused protection that I talked about two weeks ago. They may not be calling it that, but that's what they're doing. They've also come out with a, with a new report or discussion on humanitarian camps, which on the surface sounds like a horrible socialist deal, but what it is, it's a discussion on how to isolate those at risk, how to keep them safe. Again, the CDC is moving to a focused protection because they know there's gotta be an off-ramp. There has to be an off-ramp. Our society is going to, to reach the herd immunity in, in one form or fashion. We know that these kids in school do very, very well. And, and I'm, I'm thrilled to once again say, the survival rate among Kansans aged 0 to 17 is still 100%. So, you know, just in conclusion, let's prioritize getting these schools open. Let's do that as, as a county commission. We have ways to do that. I also know today that some of the, the hospital and the primary care doctors are meeting to discuss more outpatient treatments. And again, you've heard me talk about, you know, we, we had a new study a couple of weeks ago. It's not a great study, but it's a study and it shows that hydroxychloroquine plus zinc plus the, the zithromycin antibiotic does, did cut down hospitalizations. Now, it, it's not the end-all study, but it's something that gives us some hope and gives us something else we can do in our community besides sit on our hands. And again, you know, then we need to, some steroids, oral and IV are being prescribed and administered. We need to look at the nebulized budesonide. We need, we need to optimize our outpatient treatments. That's one of the, the basic pillars of approaching a pandemic like we have. And we, we failed miserably in that respect to this point in time. But, but, you know, I'm gonna continue to beat that drum. I want us to really focus on these schools and doing what we can do. And I think the biggest hurdle there is, is having the right conversation and, and, and prioritizing vaccinating, vaccinations of those teachers and such that are in the high-risk category. And, you know, I wish everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving, a safe vacation, or Thanksgiving. Do it in the means that you're comfortable with. You know, we, my, my wife's parents are still alive, they're elderly, they're not in great health. We called them and said, here's what we got. We want you to make the decision on what you think's best for you. You know, we empowered them to live their life the way they wanted to live it. And, and I'm sure it'll end up being a last-minute decision, but we are, we are each responsible for the risks we assume and, and, and we need to live our lives that way because life is to be lived and it's to be lived strongly and firmly and not in fear. So I wish each of you and each commissioner and everybody here, live and in person, the best of Thanksgiving and the safest of Thanksgiving. And I look forward to not having to talk about this in the future so much.
We all do.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Hirst, do you have items today?
I think I'm, I'm gonna add a little bit to what Commissioner Stephan said. My brother has, in Oklahoma, has contacted COVID and he's using a kind of a mix-your-own nebulizer that seems to be helping him, relates to some of the things you mentioned. But we all received a email from a doctor this past week. I correspond with him a little bit. It's one I've known, I've known him when he was a young man. And I'd like to make a comment regarding this, what he said in, in our email conversations. Cause as you know, Doctor, you are a essential worker, essential person. Yes?
Oh, I had my practice shut down 100%.
No, but anytime a physician is an essential worker, essential person. His comment, regarding school, I strongly agree that the benefits of attending outweigh the risk in children. Though they can be, I think here's the key, though they can be asymptomatic spreaders, we don't see super-spreader events occurring because of school. I wish more teachers felt the personal responsibility to continue teaching as they are indeed essential workers. I know many of them do feel they are essentials, but there are also many that don't fear, that don't as they fear for their own health, understandably. It gives me all the more respect for waiters and waitresses and people who work at Dylan's and Walmart and convenience stores who put themselves at risk every day. I thought that was a tremendous statement from him.
I thought that was a tremendous statement from him. I, I, I do, it's something we've talked about all along, is, is the fact that there aren't super-spreader events, that any benefits outweighing, and I believe our school system can provide, you know, teachers, like many of us, are gonna become infected with COVID, with the virus. But, and I realize that temporary are, are difficult to find, but it's most important that these kids are back in school. We now are seeing in most school districts a tremendous amount of Fs coming out. There's gonna be some kids that, unless they're just given a graduation, won't qualify for graduating as seniors. They need to be in school. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hurst. Uh, I'll change the subject a little bit with my comments. Our district attorney is, uh, starting his, uh, annual Toys for Tots program, and I hope citizens of Reno County will support Tom Stanton's, uh, program, uh, that the district attorney's office has done for many, many years, and support the Toys and Tots program.
Where can they drop those off at?
I think we have one here in the courthouse, and they have one in the, uh, down at the Public Works Building. Believe there's gonna be a drop-off in the law enforcement center for those. Uh, thank you for, to his office for doing that. And then, secondly, uh, I, I, I'm really impressed that, um, Dylan's is going to do the Soup Kitchen Thanksgiving dinner. Uh, the director of the Soup Kitchen, uh, was positive on Saturday, I'm familiar with that, because my wife does some work at the Soup Kitchen and, and was, knowing that she was positive. But I think it's outstanding that Dylan said, we're just, we're just gonna make this happen, and they're gonna take some two-hundred-and-fifty meals down to the Soup Kitchen for a handout, I believe on Wednesday. But I, I want to compliment Dylan's for doing that, because it would have been very easy for a business just to say, "We understand, we can't do it this year," and not make it happen, and, uh, I, I think that was an excellent, uh, uh, community service at Dylan's by doing that. I don't say a lot of good things about Dylan's since they're Kroger these days, but I think in this case, they are outstanding, uh, uh, community citizens. That's what, that's all I have, do, I think we have a motion for an executive session, please.
I'd move the board recess into executive session for not to exceed thirty minutes, for the purpose of conferring with our legal counsel on a privileged legal matter, that being a potential contract for a fifty-thousand-dollar grant request for a detox-inpatient and treatment facility by New Beginnings, Inc. No formal decision is expected during or after the executive session. It is respec, expected we will return to our regular agenda meeting and adjourn for the day. Our county counselor will participate by telephone, and county administrator Randy Partington is expected to remain for the executive session. Uh, with this to begin in, uh, five minutes.
Is there a second to that motion? I second that motion. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes?
Commissioner Stefan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellar?
Yes. Five minutes.